Welcome to the Thursday, May 1st, 2025 Select Board Meetings. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We will hear from the applicant's response to the Beal's peer review. The board will have the necessary time to ask questions. And once that's exhausted with all of our questions, we will open the meeting to citizens' comments. We will continue with our two minutes per citizen for no more than one hour. And as a reminder, I'd like to remind citizens to be germane, no profanity, refrain from applause and interruptions as it makes it difficult to continue with comments, period. And with that, I will open the floor to Attorney Silverstein.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Jonathan Silverstein for the applicant. I'm going to be brief and then turn it over, if I might, to Jim Scalise, the project engineer, who can briefly summarize the response to the engineering points that are is laid out in more detail in the submission last week. I want to just highlight a couple of new concessions and project changes that Jim will be walking you through to address some of the points raised at the last hearing. One is that we have presented a proposal for about 200 acres of the property to be placed into a to be restricted through a conservation easement, as had been requested by the board. The other is that though, as was discussed at the last meeting, we feel very strongly that the project is originally proposed, satisfied all the requirements for approval by this board set forth in the bylaw and that the bylaw clearly contemplates covered or enclosed walkways as connecting buildings to one another. We have, in part to address comments and concerns raised regarding that aspect of the bylaw and also frankly, in part because we think programmatically it's going to enhance the experience and the product of the project. We have significantly enhanced the connections between the buildings and elaborated on how those spaces are going to be programmed. And again, Jim will walk you through that. With that, I would turn it over to Jim unless the board has any questions for me.
Yeah, right, so go ahead. You mentioned conservation easement. I think that the board had suggested a conservation restriction.
Yep, and then, you know, I think at the end of the day, if that's the board's preference, I think we will go along with that. I'll tell you, the reason is that conservation restrictions, in my experience, can be it can be difficult to find an entity willing to take the conservation restriction. And it can be that there's a process to have it endorsed by the Secretary of Environment, Energy and Environmental Affairs. There's a lot of bureaucracy and complication procedurally that goes into it. All of that being said, we're not going to die on that hill. If that's the board's preference, I think we can address that.
BNRC obviously has conservation restrictions on surrounding properties across your bridge.
And I'm sure we can work something out. But I did actually realize that I left out another major new point of the application, which is, again, in response to a request from the board, to propose a payment in lieu of the what we had originally proposed as workforce housing units on site. And so we have proposed a payment of $20,000 for each of the 23 proposed single-family homes for a total of $460,000, if math is correct. And that those would be issued upon issuance of occup- those payments would be made upon issuance of occupancy permits for each of them. So I didn't want to, again, forget to point that proposal out as well. With that, I will get them up and present it.
$20,000.
It was written differently.
It was written as $20,000 to take out the workforce housing.
Right, in lieu of restricting those units as workforce housing units, we would be paying those, which was what I understood.
We haven't talked, but it was my reading of it that it was $20,000 total, not per unit.
Oh, no, no, $20,000.
That's what it said in this, that removing the the four units, you're going to give us $20,000 to the housing thing, but what you said was-
I thought it said upon-
That's what it said.
Upon issuance of each occupancy permit, but I will represent to you. It's for each ones, for a total of $460,000.
Thank you.
Good evening. For your record, my name is Jim Scalise. I'm a civil engineer with FDA Design Group. This is our latest site plan. Understanding the geometry of this room, there's copies of what I'm presenting there, 11 by 17, so there's four pages. The working in concert with our architect and our landscape architect, we have made some significant changes to the site plan since our original submission back, I think, last October or November. These are all available digitally. I've given a thumb drive to the town manager, so if you-
All right, do you want to share that, Michael?
So the, you know, the issues that we've kind of run through, and if I just go kind of through them, because we've never really had a chance since the original submission to really discuss what we've done. So I framed up a response to the peer review that tried to create general topics so that it was in kind of bite-sized portions so that we could put together a response. And in doing so, we came up with a new site plan. So we talked about things like zoning. I know there's debate, but that's, we'll leave that to the lawyers, frankly. Mansion preservation, which is integral to this special permit. And I'm going to, I'll be brief, but our goal is to be, is to restore the mansion. We have exhibits, we have illustrations, we have architecture. You know, we're proposing to do a full restoration of the mansion. I think our, it's just kind of how the details play out that I think is, if there is a debate. And what we're proposing is that we have an architect engaged. We work with the town. I think the town would have the ability, if they felt it was necessary, to hire an expert at our expense and to work through a process where we would iron out those details. Our only reservations in anything that I've seen written on this application have been structural. You know, we put a fairly large amount of work into a letter and review. This building's in tough shape. The basement is shored. The building needs some work. And then you run into some code issues, particularly with energy, but also with accessibility. So the rear of the building is, in our opinion, a good location to shore this building up as well as to meet some of those code requirements without damaging or affecting the aesthetic of the building. So we think we have a good plan as it relates to that. We do understand it's a process. Getting into the details of that is something that we discussed early on as it relates to the sequencing of things. And I know there's some debate about that, but it's our approach that we've given a promise. We've given a proposal on how we're going to go about our work. And we stand by that. And we would expect that with the condition, this could easily be incorporated into a decision. Preservation of the front yard was my next topic. And there was some parking, grass-on-gravel parking, which I thought was a, as a civil engineer, was a fair idea. If we had some event space, that was not looked on favorably. So we've engaged our landscape architect to create parking areas, which are grass-on-gravel with gravel driveways in front of these two buildings, north and south, or these three buildings. But in doing so, by creating planted bounds and carefully using the topography, the hillside topography of the property. If you take a cross-section through the entrance driveway in this parking area, what you see is that you have a raised elevation with some mature plantings. And then you have a situation where you've really screened the vehicles. So we think that we can maintain the front view along 183 at the same time, meet our needs as it relates to parking demands. Parking demand was a comment made by the peer reviewer that we were overparked. So we took that as a nod to be able to look at shared parking. And it's quite common that when you have a hotel use, for example, that you're able to say the restaurant, for example, is going to be used by folks who are actually staying in a hotel. It's quite common that these uses overlap and they have peak times at different times so that you don't overpark a site. Parking creates all sorts of problems, particularly as a civil engineer. I don't need to practice in designing. I'm a contractor, it's going to be practicing building. They're entirely sensitive, they create, you know, areas where you have increased temperature runoff. So by putting the parking underneath the buildings, being more careful about the number of spaces, we've significantly reduced the parking demand at this location. As we looked at open space, what our proposal is at this point, as Jonathan has already pointed out, I think we're flexible on some of this. But what we're proposing is a little over 200, 208 acres of conservation restriction or easement. This is the agri-hood area. We have a very specific limit of work area that we delineated. That's just 17 acres. That, as we would expect, could be, because we would like the ability to put some greenhouses out there. We think that could be restricted quite easily through the special permit process. These wetlands are already protected. And then the front lawn, based on our plans and the site plan reviewed as part of the special permit, would be restricted from anything beyond what we've illustrated on the plan, which I believe at this time is only a tent, if anything. So this is the, where the open space proposal sits at, you know, a CR-type restriction at 208 acres and then sizable area beyond that. architecture, we've gone through a detailed process of based on comments which you heard at the public hearing. One in particular was the bedroom count. And, you know, that there was a preference possibly for less one bedrooms and more two and three bedrooms. So that distribution has been adjusted through this revision. What are one-bedroom units constitute? 15% of the units, two-bedroom, 42, and three-bedroom, 43. So we balanced two and three bedrooms at a higher percentage and reduced one bedrooms. And also in that redesign process, we were able to maximize parking under the roof. So which again, is has those environmental improvements as it relates to the development on the site. We talked about some materials. I think the context of this is, as part of the review, is a little surprising. I mean, I don't think anyone wants this project to look better than the applicant. So I think that's, if you allow us that context, we can offer excellent materials. We're looking at a very high-end product. We don't believe that there should be really anything as it relates to the aesthetic of the building. We looked at internal circulation and parking, as I heard him spoke. We talked about the reductions that were in the Beal's letter, the front lawn, preserve the entrances at the north and south. We do think there'll have to be some adjustment to the, like, there's like a wrought iron fencing material between the sewn pillars. And we think there maybe need to be some adjustment to that just to accommodate fire trucks. But that's our only change, and that'll be dealt with as part of working with the town and the fire chief, just to make sure emergency vehicles have access. Otherwise, we have no desire to alter those entrances. Workforce housing, if this is worded poorly, that's because a civil engineer wrote it. So I apologize for that. Yes, the intention here is to have 20,000 per single-family dwelling. That seemed an easy way to kind of get to a number. We would, we still show on our site plan the duplex units. So not to be confused, those would just create some variety. We kind of like those, so our intention would be to keep them, but they would no longer be restricted. So they would be market rate under this proposal.
And what is your sense of, do you want to weigh to the end or?
Go ahead.
What's your sense of, you know, the, if those four units were market rate, what is your sense of where they would be priced?
Oh, gosh, I'm not sure. I think a lot of it would have to do with finishes. The square footages, the square footage of those units, even if they had an upstairs in them, which I don't have full architecture on those, would probably be in the 1,700 range, 1,800 range. So the cost of construction's got to be 400 bucks a square foot, so.
Well, that's for workforce, probably, probably, but for-
For this, it could be five, sure.
Yeah, yeah. So at 400 times 17 is six-
So they're $900,000 units, if you said.
But the cost of construction, even for the workforce, would be 4 times 1,700 is 680 grand.
Sure.
And while I love the idea that the workforce housing alternative payment is 460, not 20, I would just point out that, you know, that I think that should be purely driven by the math, that $460,000, if this were for homeownership workforce housing, you're probably looking at a situation where a teacher could afford a mortgage in the $250,000 range. So that pays for two houses. You know, 460 pays for maybe two houses in terms of the difference between what that construction cost is and what the teacher could afford in terms of a mortgage. So I'm not sure if you're going at 460 and taking out four units of housing is going to be better than a payment of 460.
I guess the only point I'll make is the intent was to break even on the workforce housing units, or maybe not quite. Now, you know, if these are 900 to construct?
That would be at the high end. Let's say 680.
Call it 680 to construct. If they sold for 800, that's the profit.
No, no, I'm talking about if we leave them as workforce.
Oh, if you leave-
If we leave them as workforce, you really can't price them more than, because people can't get the subsidy if they're, if they're over 100% AMI. So, you know, realistically, they can only-
I think workforce is generally, and I think someone at an earlier session suggested 150% AMI as workforce. You know, even if it was 120, if it's a-
So at 120, you can get a basic mortgage of what, 3, 350 total?
Well, it depends on the size. It's based on, so generally, if it's, if you're going by mass housing, or I think, either way, I think it ends up being, you look at the AMI varies by family size. So for a three-bedroom unit, assuming this would be a three-bedroom unit, you'd be looking at the AMI for a four-person household.
Yeah.
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I had done the math and it roughly would end up, you know, clearing some profit, but not significantly on the workforce housing units.
Yeah, I don't understand the math on this point, you know.
Yeah, I think it's not the full value of the unit. I think where you guys are missing each other, if I make a wild guess, is that even at a workforce housing unit, it's sold at some value. So even if it's half the value, right? So there's some, there's some-
It just, it can't, it can't-
But you can't substitute the cost of construction.
What the mortgage is going to be. You can't price it at more than what the mortgage could be carried by the workforce person. And if the mortgage is, even if it was 120 per three-bedroom, family of four, you know, likely at the three times the multiplier in the mortgage, you're at 360, and your cost at four units square foot is 680. That's my point. There's a 320 differential. So, you know, so four units times that is kind of 1.2 million or so. It's better deal for us to go for the four units you have than even at four.
Which is fine, you know, I think there's risk, you know, with respect to the substitution on our end. And it's a straight-out payment as opposed to, I mean, I don't know what, I can try to do some quick math as to how it plays out and look, we're happy to have this conversation. I think that's, my suggestion would be, let's put a pin in it and see if there are any other issues at the end.
Good.
And just, you know, try to get through the most.
There were, I'm on nine of 10, so if we can track. The Beal's letter spent probably half the document talking about civil engineering, things like stormwater. And it was our intention, if you read it, to say that, you know, we were at a design development stage with our design of stormwater. And the intention was, is to illustrate, or at least for me to have a, be able to have an opinion that the stormwater standards could be met. You know, I wanted to be able to stand up here and say with a degree of confidence after, I don't know, there's got to be 80 pages of stormwater analysis that I did that say that, yes, when we have a final site plan and as we do each phase, I know I can meet the stormwater standards. I haven't yet, but I know I can. And that was the approach that we were taking, understanding full well that the town has a process that I think is recent that you have a stormwater permit now that requires, you know, on projects, not even in the buffer zone, to meet stormwater standards. So we're fully cognizant of the fact that we have to meet full standards. We would expect to build the infrastructure related to stormwater phased with, as the development occurs. You know, you wouldn't build the entire stormwater system when you built the first building. It's just out of economic sense. It's something that can easily phased as we go. So that was always our approach. But that and the mansion, both of those items kind of being sequenced as it relates to a use permit. You know, it's much easier for any developer, frankly, to dig into details and spend a significant amount of money and work on this with some understanding that there is an amount of density and amount of development that can occur. So that was the logic. We're not avoiding that issue. And I'm comfortable telling you that I know I can meet the stormwater standards, but I haven't yet. We have, we have spent time as it relates to water and sewer. I met with both of the commissioners. There is, you know, they felt as well that, you know, kind of looking at this as a whole, you certainly wouldn't want to reserve particularly sewer for the entire project now. You know, you wouldn't allocate or pay for that sewer, but as we phased it, we would work. There has been recently INI studies for inflow and infiltration that occurred all the way up to our property line. But our property line into our site, that sewer was designed by my father, I think, in like 85. So that's due for an inspection and we've agreed with the commissioner, sewer commissioner, that that needs to be done. But other than that water, we had, the tank up at Lake Averick has been renovated and repaired or replaced. And we have good water. There's, comes down through Quaidnoa Road and then it already crosses onto our site. We need infrastructure. So our plans include a fire protection building. They include a new connection. We don't have to go through the wetlands, we can use that fighting. But there may be some work done on the pump station on Quaidnoa Road. And we're aware of that. And we've already discussed it. This applicant actually has already participated in some of those repairs in the past. So there's a good relationship with both sewer and water. We believe that the building commissioner, who we also met with in advance of applying for this application, would have a large role in a couple of ways. One is as part of the conversation as it relates to improving and restoring the mansion. We think he would have an integral role in understanding how code upgrades are part of that process and what can be restored and what needs to be supplemented or complemented to make that happen. We also think that there's maybe an unforeseen benefit of the building commissioner in that, you know, as those progress, particularly with the mansion, you know, they, the commissioner has significant latitude to issue or not issue building permits. So for example, you know, if the board is, for some reason, believes that this applicant hasn't kept a promise, you simply don't issue a building permit. I mean, our recourse for that is typically to go to the zoning board, you know, which is, you know, so it's, it would be much, it's much easier for an applicant to comply with a promise than to fight about it. Let's put it that way.
Joe, I just want to correct you. And I just sent a text to Michael to ask this question. You met with the owners or superintendents, not commissioners, which would have been a quorum.
Oh, okay, yeah, very well.
Just so everyone's clear that was, there's no violation.
They call the superintendent, so that's, that's my mistake, sorry. The, but, so we think there's, there's plenty of coverage and control by the town and the board to be comfortable in the place we now sit. We think we have a complete application. I know there was, there's this two other quick exhibits that we talked about that are the connectors. So we wanted to give the board a visual of, so these buildings are here for illustrative purposes. Our, the renderer who did this is in our architect. So if it's a minor deviation here and says it on the plan, the architecture plans govern. But the connector as a visual, you'll see that it's quite a substantial building. That it's not just a corridor connecting or a breezeway, if you will, but it's a, it's a, it's really a building that connects the two residential structures. It can have amenity space, it could be a solarium. There's about a 930 by 30 square in the center of it here that gives it some space, you know, to have an actual amenity use. And then an alternative, depending on how, you know, how much sunlight the location gets, we also have a greenhouse moving where we, you know, this, this is, has an agricultural theme, this development with an agri-hood. And we believe that some greenhouses built within the development would fit our program. And so here's an example of what that might look like in scale as it relates to the building. The site plan shows landscaping, so we tried to show that in the rendering. So you're seeing a consistent building and representation of what we're proposing. And that really sums up what I have. I mean, the last thing was traffic. But what we believe is important in traffic is, you know, traffic engineers, 90% of the reports I've written seem to have a very similar conclusion. And I respect folks when they say that, you know, how come there's never any traffic impact? Well, there's always change when it comes to traffic. But whether change is an impact or is considered congestion as is often under the special permit criteria are very different things. And traffic engineers are looking at numbers to explain and to control how they judge traffic. I think this project will certainly make a change. Anyone who lives in the town is going to feel more traffic if this project will go down. Okay, that's, I'm not here to tell you otherwise. I'm here to tell you that that will not create and that will not create a situation that is detrimental or unsafe. The, I think from our part, there was a couple of comments in the Beal report that talked about construction-related traffic, which is significantly less than full build-out traffic that we looked at. So we believe we can look at that per phase as we go forward. And then also, a comment was made about how would we control our uses to minimize off-site traffic. So I went through and listed six different things that we're going to do. You know, we're going to have valet parking. We're going to have traffic management. We're going to have signage and wayfinding. We're going to have event scheduling and coordination. We're going to have communication and policies and infrastructure improvement. So we're going to go through and manage our facility in accordance with a traffic management plan so we minimize our impacts on the nearby roadway, which I think is the, was the goal of the peer review and we're on board with that. So in our closing statement, you know, we believe that from a practical standpoint, the town will be engaged in the detailed planning of the mansion's restoration during the first year of the project. We've included some phasing materials in here about how we think the project would be built out. I've given you a Gantt chart and some other concepts on how that would play out. And we hope and trust that these proposed changes will be well received. We thank you for your participation in the process.
If I could just quickly follow up on the subject of-
How's your wrist, by the way? Is it cold in the summer?
It's doing much better, thank you. Get my stitches out tomorrow. So area median income in Stockbridge is according to mass housing for a family of four is 123,000. So the affordability measure is 30%. So for a, at 120% AMI, that would support a $550,000 purchase price, assuming 6.5% interest rate. And at 150% AMI, which is what was suggested at the first meeting, I believe, that would support a $700,000 purchase price. So just some measures to help frame the discussion.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, well, I had the one question with the connectors because it wasn't as important, but you answered that. The one thing was like, was brought up, so you're doing the front facade, you're doing it all the best of the building. I know the inside, I've been in there, it's nothing there. What's, when you walk in the front door, what are you walking into? Are you walking into a period of that timeframe of the house, of the mansion at that time? You know, lobby and stuff, I just.
We save significant materials. If you've been in there, you can see that we've stacked everything and saved a lot of the trim work. The fireplaces can all be saved. Even there's one in the back corner there that the foundation's busted out, and we think we can repair that in the basement. We think we can save portions of the sides, just how far down we get is going to be dependent on what happens in the basement area. But inside, yeah, the, the, the ground floor is going to be common space, we believe, with some gathering areas, so.
Yeah, there's going to be more of that designed for the period of the.
Yeah, we actually have a lot of photographs in our, the review of that trim.
Floors upstairs, it's, you know, the rooms are different, but the lobby and stuff, I was just, we've never really discussed that, and you walk in the front door, what do you see?
The stairway has been talked about, there's a grand stairway. It's a little dangerous right now, but, but the idea is to have that. You know, there are some code issues as it relates to open ratio all through the center of the building fires, but, you know, we think we can at least up to that second floor have that stairway. And there's a grand fireplace right there, which will be in that gathered space, whether that's a bar or a lounge, or however they frame it, will be up to the architect.
Okay, well, that's, we follow up on. The challenge here is in the, in the permit application, it says to the greatest extent practicable. And, and I just, foundationally, fundamentally, this is a preservation bylaw. And, you know, I mean, at an extreme, for example, what happens if you get into the work and the front facade collapses? I mean, literally like, you know, it's hard when we don't have details around the preservation to understand, I mean, saving the staircase sounds great, saving the front, as much as side facades sounds great, all this detail sounds great, but at the end of the day, it sounds like you don't yet know what is, what is practical. And, and I guess the question I would have for you is just an extreme one. What happens if we, we get in there and there is nothing that is practicable? I mean, what, or, or put another way, are you in a position to commit to at least some of this work? Because in the absence of that.
I believe we are. I believe we are. The, the, we did an initial inspection independently, myself and my staff, and we were very concerned about particularly the rear wall and on the south wing, the north wall on the south wing, which is in that rear courtyard. Those walls are in terrible condition. They're shored up with timbers. They, they need to be replaced. The floor loads will significantly increase in the hallways and in the rooms as what is, what, what the capacity is of those floor systems now. Since then, we walked it with our, our current architect, and we've determined that we think we can make those spans work because we have enough ceiling height. So if we have to reframe or increase framing, we could sister, or we could reconstruct the floor frame. That's really where we need to start, is get the floor systems constructed. And once we have that, then we can, we think we can save definitely the front. It's just how far up this, the back corners on both sides are my concern. So, you know, if you're asking me to commit to a percentage, I'd say 50% of each side would be where I could probably commit to right now. I'm hoping for more, but I, I, I just don't, the basement is in really bad shape on that, on the west side. You know, until I dig it up.
And I, I guess, to your question, something, if you go in and you discover termites have destroyed the entire thing, obviously, we have to commit and we will be obligated to perform the work as, as we proposed. If some unforeseen condition is discovered during the work, then we would have to come back to the board and explain what happened, why we didn't anticipate it. Again, I don't think that's going to happen, you know.
As I would put the whole permit at risk if we weren't able to preserve the building to a, to a, whatever the agreed upon, what I just heard was 4% and a staircase and so, and, and reusing the molding. I think that, that the permit at the very least has to reflect that and, and, and has to, and there has to be a recognition that whatever the thing is that, that we're committing, that you're committing to, it has to, we have to, we have to be, we have to get that work done before the rest of the work. We got to know that work before we start wasting your money doing the rest of it.
That's exactly what I was going to say. We're going to know that because this is the first thing we're going to be doing.
Right.
We're going to be doing the restoration, the landscape screening. That's the first thing we're going to do. So if we walk in, the entire place falls down around us, we'll know before we put any of the other elements of the project. It's after comeback here. I do want to just know that I got that language specifically from the bylaw, which says that proposed, existing buildings will be altered, quote, to the least extent practicable. So I was, I was using the language of the bylaw, which is in my application narrative, which, so, but we are committed to doing at least that. We just, we don't know how much more we can commit to, but the entire aesthetic, the entire theme of this property is going to be centered around this beautiful centerpiece. And so there's an incentive to save as much as we can, and what we can save to, to your point, have the, the restored building have as much of the character of the original business.
Okay, so then you would be coming back to us at some point soon with a little bit more detail and specifics, because the idea that we're going through a five-step architectural process, I'm happy to hear that. I hear that that's a standard process of everyone. We're going to need the detail of what would be envisioned to be saved, and obviously you just represented what that is. So we're going to need to get that into something where it gets written into.
Yeah, we would write into a proposed condition that we're committing to doing at least that, the front facade, you know, whatever portion of the side facades, and trying to reutilize.
And, and the building, and whatever the details are.
And then we would regularly report to the board on the progress. If, if we're able to do more, we will let you know. If we're not, we'll let you know that.
Do you have any other questions?
Many, but I didn't.
Those are the two main ones I had, and I answered them both.
Okay.
Patrick.
So I spent a number of hours working with town council and Michael over the last couple of weeks. Oh, I, sorry. I spent a couple of hours working with town council and Michael in the, in the past couple of weeks since our last meeting to, to go through both your, both the response to the peer review document and some of the abutters, letters, of which many were, have brought up excellent points. So I, I wanted to just, before I get into this, so suggest that these aren't leading questions, they don't reflect sort of a bias one way or the other. This is based on my conversation with Chris and with Donna and with Michael, going through both your, your submissions and, and, and some of the abutters submissions. So I just wanted to kind of get into that if we could and go through and, and, and see, see how we, we, we end up. So we just talked about the architecture, which was a concern, I believe, of town, of both town council and I think the board. One of the abutters lawyers brought up, building an E violates prohibition, new detached structures. Town council has advised us that we have some discretion here, as you indicated in the last, in the last, in the last meeting. The question on the, on the size of floor plan, while, while there's some question about the size of the various floor plans, and Chris, if I, if I mistake, if I mistake any of this, please correct me, but the, the feedback I got from our town council was that, that section 6.2 gives us some flexibility on, on the floor plan issue. That doesn't mean we have to agree with it, but it, you know, the law, the, 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 the bylaws allow that. I think that the question on more can be done for the preservation of the mansion and the grounds we just covered. On the question of stormwater management, you know, both Chris and Donna felt that we need to have, have perhaps more detail on that, and, and, and I would love to hear kind of, you know, what, what additional detail around stormwater management might look like. I also think that the question of stormwater management coming off the agri-hood is something I think that should be addressed. In fact, I have several agri-hood questions around. Now, the, the agri-hood, as I understand it, unlike the lower portion of the property, is in the, is in the watershed. And because of that, you know.
Of Lake Averick?
Yeah. It's not.
It's the Stockbridge Bowl. It is the Stockbridge Bowl's watershed.
Well, I understand that, but it was my, I thought I'd seen a map for Lake Averick, that, the Lake Averick watershed, that as you go up further up the mountain that.
I use stream stats.
All right, great, and my, my, I stand corrected. On the question of, of, of the, of the, the agri-hood though, I, I do have a question on, on methods. Specifically, is there an expectation that this is going to be purely organic? Are pesticides going to be used? Are fertilizers going to be used? Are you, are you averse to conditioning around that? You know, even if it's not in the watershed, there are sensitive wetlands right below it, obviously. And, you know, and I read an excellent piece on, on wetlands mitigation banking that somebody wrote a number of years ago, and see how, how, how important wetlands are to you.
You've dug deep.
So I, I guess I'm just asking, you know, as it relates to the agri-hood, because that is still, you know, at an elevation above the wetlands, do you have any sense of what the agricultural practices would be in the, in the agri-hood?
I, I think we really do not. I think that.
From a, from a stormwater treatment standpoint, the proximity is, is very important. There's a best management practice under the stormwater management policy that is like a grass filter strip, and at 100 feet, you get 10% removal credit, for example. We, we've, we located the agri-hood a couple hundred feet away from the wetlands to allow there to be some natural attenuation and treatment should there be runoff in that regard. So there's, there was some thought given to that issue. More could be done if that's, but that would be all natural, low-impact approaches would make the most sense in this. And then source control, which I think is where you're headed, would also be part of that analysis, so that that would be something to discuss.
I think the idea was to basically find a partner who's in the farming industry to sort of run that component, and we're not at that point, so I don't know that we have that level of detail.
But I'm assuming you had a high-end kind of thing like this, that the, the pesticides, at the very least, I think an organic farm is something that, you know, you have a whole lot of easier time selling the fresh veggies if, you know, they're not sprayed with, you know, Roundup, whatever you spray, spray veggies with.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think that very likely might be where we end up. Obviously, from just the standpoint of marketability and flexibility, our preference would be to not have that restriction, but if that is.
Not have a restriction.
Not, not have a condition that says it has to be organic farming, but again, I don't know that that's something that we would categorically say no to. I would need some time to talk to my client about it.
Now, beyond that, you've got six in the, in the, in the mock-up on one of these pages. I think it looks like there's six greenhouses in the agri-hood, something like that.
Yeah.
The mock-up.
Yeah, the, the thought was is that, you know, with our short growing season, that we would want some. I, I fit some in there just to kind of give you a scale. I have no idea how many they would need, so I put eight in there.
Okay.
Sorry, that's okay. But I think the scale shows that they can be located, you know, quite a distance.
Yeah.
Now, this, the distance from the property line to the edge here is 312 feet that way. No, so 356 feet, I mean, this is just the center of that landmass, you know.
And, and do you not envision, you know, you talk about a farming partner, I mean, you know, I guess the question is what else is up there, you know, because there's no access road that's envisioned in the plan? And, you know, is there, is there going to be, you know, 17 acres was a giant farm? And, you know, what about things like tilling and, you know, you know, other automated equipment, tractors?
So there's an existing road that's been used for logging historically that goes back there.
Where is it?
Oh, right here.
Oh, okay. The trail, that's right.
So obviously, any permitting that's required, you know, would be undertaken through the conservation commission, but we do anticipate we're going to need to get some sort of vehicular passage back there over that former trail, so.
Now, I, I just will point out though, that it seems like the, if we break this up into four color-coded sections, and I can't tell you the colors on colored line, but you have the one that to me looks blue, then you got these three shades of colors, I can't tell you what they are. I'm assuming this is green because it's big.
Like green and medium.
But this one right here is not in the restriction here.
That's right.
And, and frankly, to frame this, my, my thinking on this bylaw has always been that there is a bonus associated with preserving the mansion. So the bonus is basically compared to what you could do in a subdivision. All right. I think there's a lot of bonus on the lower part here. I, I think, you know, there's, when you look at the 62 units that the consultant told the planning board several years ago, you could build by right.
I would say 62 lots, which under current law means 62 houses of any size plus 62 ADUs.
But don't get me wrong, I, I love the idea of protecting this.
No, no, I know, but so it's really, it's 104 units.
Right.
By right.
162 times.
I'm sorry, 124.
Right, right, okay. So, so my point is just that you're still significantly above that in both the bonus in terms of both use and the number of units, all right? It's not outrageously above it, but it is above it. I never want to go through one again. And the only way we do that is if this area here is fine for agriculture, but can't ever be used for anything else. And to get to there, you know, we're basically talking about trying to extend the dark green area with perhaps two different restrictions. One, there would be, there would permit agricultural uses in this part here, and then that would be as restrictive as possible in this part here. And that basically locks in this process, which is, is frankly not easy on the town to give you what you were looking for in the lower portion, but, you know, because otherwise, really, you know, the day we permit this, we could, we could be in a, a situation where there, you know, at any point in the future, you could come back with a new permit request for a whole lot of, of effort. And if you look at the areas that are not in the restriction here, it is easily the same landmass, even outside the agri-hood, that you have at the lower portion. So I would say it is basically, you know, you're going to need to kind of lock the whole thing up and, and accept the fact that you have a, a resort that is, you know, that is substantive and, and, and not completely supported in the town, but, you know, we're not, we're not building on the upper, you know. When you came in the first time, you know, now with that, that, you know, the, we all saw the photos of what it would look like to have the houses up here that had originally been proposed. And, and I think this is a better proposal than where you started 10 years ago or eight years ago, whatever it was, but, you know.
I guess I completely understand what you're saying. I guess I'd like to make a few points. First of all, we could not come back for another cottage or estate special permit because there'd be no more historic structure.
It's circumvented though.
We could not do that. We could not do that because we, I mean. So I guess conceptually, we come back and we try to convince whatever sitting select board at the time that. And Conservation Commission that we can put a full subdivision row that exceeds your, you know, that. The wetlands in spite of a special permit condition that says that there's no more residential development. I guess the only thing I want to point out is. In a lot of ways, this project is a little bit of a leap of faith. And so let and this is nothing that Pat has ever suggested to me, but just speculating. He decides he wants to come back to the board and ask to put in. A stable so that, you know, guests of the hotel could have horseback riding and put in trails back there.
That might be.
What's that?
That would be included if you designated a farm and then you should be able to build.
That part is a farm.
But, you know, have farm to table dinners back there that. I guess my point is the town is protected. There's nothing we could ever do back here by right. All we're saying is we don't know what sorts of amenities. In the future, the resort might. Things would be. Would enhance the experience of guests. And we're just asking, I mean, we're reserving. Over two hundred acres of property. No, no touch at all.
Most of that is on in, most of that's in the scenic mouth cap, obviously.
Which, as you pointed out, doesn't mean we can't do anything with it. And, you know, we very intentionally included more than that. And I'm not saying. That it's off the table to add, but. Our thought is we just want to preserve the ability. If we think of another amenity, tennis courts, something to come and say, look. Here's why we can't fit it here. Here's why we think it's.
The CR. So if we, and here we are, the the CR for the two properties, let's say there's two, there's two parts, there's two, there's two areas. This one is much is is as restrictive as it can be. This one, you you can carve out in the CR agricultural use, you can carve out recreational use. You can carve out, you know, just those two things.
We wanted to put up a barn and have farm to table dinners.
Barn is agricultural use.
The barn is, but the farm to table dinners.
There's reserved uses. I I I look at it, you know, we're in the middle of a CR for for the Penn Farm property with the Mohicans. I've been immersed in these CRs for weeks now. I would suggest to you that you have a lot of flexibility. Think it through now is all I'm saying, because I would like to see, I would like to see us. Go through this process this time and never again.
I get it, and I would ask if you would think about just. I mean, this, the town is fully protected. There's nothing, anything we were ever to come back and ask to do back there would be. Fully discretionary. And we could write the condition to make it very clear. There's nothing we could do back there by right. Which we couldn't anyway. But, you know, lamping, what if we want to put some, you know, yurts back there so people can, you know, do over. I don't know. I I'm I'm speculating because. I think it's just a matter of having the flexibility to come and ask. It's. Nothing we could do by right.
But mostly, I guess the larger point that I'm making is I can live with a farm area because farm is both by right and and I think an inherent good. I would rather not see a giant amount of new development back there. I don't care if it's glamping or, you know, you know, building tennis courts. This is like, this is pristine natural environment and you've got, you've got an animal court or it's a huge important biomap. That that goes all the way from, you know, from, from, you know, Kennedy Park all the way down to to Mass Pike. You know, and and then on the other side connects, I wish we could connect to that, but then all the way down past the sportsmanship. This property right here from a natural conservation point of view is incredibly important. And this area here is is a significant portion of the flat at the bottom of that hill, you know.
And you can always say no to anything we ask for. I mean. This would be in ten years, fifteen years or maybe never, but. And I hear you and we will have the discussion.
When though?
Well, I think my suggestion.
Oh, you guys all did the discussion this morning, okay.
Yeah, I think at some point tonight we should.
Makes it a lot easier to.
Take a recess and.
It makes it this, you know, when you look at this map, and I would point this out to everybody in the room too. When you look at this map, look at how tiny this is compared to how massive this is. And that's, that's why I know I'm being kind of a jerk, but that's my job. You know, when you look at this wetland and up, we're talking about seventy eighty percent of the property. It's it really would be a huge conservation win if we could protect all of that. And in the absence of protecting that, then then, you know, then you've got, you know, a much less desirable, I think. You know, put another way. The volume you get is tied to what you could do by right and what you're willing to give up. And I think that in this case, we've got one hundred and forty five units plus the thirty three units plus now the four new units. Plus the use bonus, there's a lot that you're getting above and beyond what you could do by right. And what I would like to see get back would be the protection of. This swath carving out the agricultural use and whatever kind of, you know. I don't think if you were to build a barn because it would be allowed into agricultural restriction. And I don't think anybody's going to complain if you set up some tables and chairs and serve some people dinner in there, you know, certainly. I I got to believe there's a way to permit that, but, you know, that kind of leaves most of this where it is. So, you know. I think this one is is town council wasn't convinced. Look, just what I'm talking about here is the two bylaws that they've applied under, which is six point six point. Three four, whatever it is, the cottage error state bylaw, but also six point one point two, which gives us rights. Not gives us rights, gives discretion to this board to permit something if it isn't explicitly defined in the bylaw. All right. There's some question from our legal team and once again, Chris, feel free to jump in. I'm not the lawyer here. About whether we have the flexibility to allow the forty foot height of the buildings. And the the simple stupid, I'm not an engineer suggestion that we came up with was. You just dig it five feet deeper and put the parking further in the ground so that you can maintain the thirty five foot height on on those buildings. I don't know anything about engineering. I'm just asking the question because it is explicitly in the bylaw. That that there's a thirty five foot height limit. And is there a way to basically bury five of those feet if you need to have the forty feet? I I suggest them to call that we only sell the units.
I mean, before you, Jim can answer that from a technical standpoint. But I really, you know.
Structure that could allow.
I mean, slops, I don't know where the groundwater is, but before Jim gets into the technical nature, I want to.
I can make it short. I mean, the the connector that we show shows a garage door that's flush with the face of the building. And then we're assuming about a five foot cut to get down into the basement, the way it's designed now. And the reason we did it that way is that the garage door will sit at grade. Right? It's not lower because in in Stockbridge, which is unlike any other town I've worked in, the height is measured from the lowest point anywhere around the building to the highest point on the roof. And it's not in the building code, for example, it's a grade plane or these other definitions of height. In Pittsfield, it's halfway between the ridge and the eve or something. And in Stockbridge is to the very peak of the roof from the lowest point anywhere around the building, so I need to balance that. So what the end result would be to to meet your height definition is that these garage doors, if this gets deeper, would have to stand rile of the buildings. Does that make sense? So I'd have to, I'd have to extend the the driveway as I went, you know, twenty feet further out in front of. Out from the building so that I I could make the height definition work.
Then I could use slope torque too.
Yeah, I think I could.
And groundwater.
I think I have an upgrade in this site to make groundwater work. I I I'm more concerned about the height definition in the building inspector. And is is the the issue there would be that the the way these are drawn on the site plan would have to change. For the connectors, because I've created connectors that are, you know, outside of the building, so these garage doors are at the right rate plane. And they would have to come out a little further to make that work.
Put another way, the the feeling of town council is that this is the point at the greatest risk in terms of. The proposal you've made and it is explicitly not allowed. So now look at, we could, you know, everyone is, everyone, everyone here keeps showing up thinking that we are the final deciders, okay? Likely, likely, you know, we live in a world where everybody has lawyers and likely the final decider is going to be a judge in my court. Or wherever you bring the spirit or wherever those sorts of appeals are taken to. So I, you know what, I I'm I'm not an engineer and I'm certainly not a lawyer. But I am telling you what my, what our town council is telling us is that if we show flexibility on us, that is the area where. You know, where where this permit is is potentially at risk, so I would.
Patrick, Christopher's on.
Yes.
Christopher, can you come on, please?
Yep, can everybody hear me?
It's a little wobbly.
Sorry about that. So, and Patrick, I got an idea this afternoon. It's, I I believe what we have said is that the. Existing principal structure is greater than the maximum allowable height in this zoning district. If all of the new buildings are regarded as attached to the principal structure. It is possible for the applicant to secretly, under the nonconforming structures section of the bylaw. To expand and the expand the height nonconformity to the new structures. I I we have not expressed an opinion as to whether that's necessarily the conclusion that the board needs to reach. But that is a path that the applicant is pursuing. And it's one that. We understand and and have. You know, believe, you know, stated differently, it all turn, all of the the ability to have the height as proposed for connected. New buildings turns upon the question of whether they are all attached structures. If they are regarded as all attached structures, then six point one point two provides a path. For effectively endorsing the height of the other buildings.
Okay.
And. That was. Sorry, are you done, Chris?
I am done, thank you.
Sorry. That was our initial proposal, which we asked to have a threshold determination. It was made, that was when we were just showing basically enclosed corridors. Now we're showing, you know, full on amenity spaces. That could be gyms, indoor pool, spa areas, libraries. So we haven't programmed all of it, but they're. Much more substantial connections than we originally proposed. When we still thought it would be allowable, now we feel very comfortable with that. And I just have to say, I mean. The only way to lower the structure by five feet, frankly, is to have a lot more surface parking, which is what we're trying to avoid.
Right, okay.
So, and I don't know.
Sorry, Chris, I'm sorry if I got that, what I said wrong. I mean, the stuff is really complex for us lay folks, so, you know. Can we move on to the question of of screening? There isn't much detail in terms of what the screening would look like in terms of the the. You know, I have, I'm scrolling because these notes are like sixty pages long. Okay, so, so the. As a, before, before we get, you know, as we're working up the conservation restriction issues, which I would assume would be early on, I think the standard is that that's put in place first. You know, that this gives us an opportunity to work on vegetative screening and, you know, for kind of a noise and light buffers. And and I did not see a lot of detail on screening in the proposal. I I did have a chance, as I mentioned at a prior meeting, to talk to to an arborist as well as I I did some research. Online in terms of lighting control strategies, but, you know, and and we can, I can share these, I can post them, I can share them directly or show them through Michael or or Don or whoever. But, you know, on issues like, you know, overplanting in the first seven years in specific species that we look at. In in how we ensure that as little light and noise, both during the construction process and permanently, we're to be able to escape. You know, this is, um, this is, I think, critically important to the neighborhood. And and I would like to get a lot more detail. You know, I can share, like I said, I can share what I have, but I'm certainly no expert at this. I just was listening to some other folks who are, you know.
So I guess I would say this, I think there was a planting plan in the original submission.
There was, and this one actually was more densely planted.
Right, so.
Can you speak to it then?
I think we can probably resubmit the planting plan to reflect the.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. And, you know, the, I think the conversations that we've had, particularly. What we talked about. With our our landscape architect was, you know, how do we deal with the heights? You know, as we were drawing this, we wanted to represent, so the 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 concept was. The the discussion with planting height is always that if you have a smaller plant, it has a higher success rate. This is a similar planting discussion. So I guess what we talked about internally, just to give you the context, and I'm sorry. Is that, you know, you plant larger stuff. If you don't have success with mortality, you keep planting around it until you get to the end goal. But the commitment was is to plant some mature plants up front so that you get immediate screen. But the the amount of screening, so these are, this green color on here is all existing up front and that'll be maintained. This is an aerial photo showing forested areas kind of around the site, so that doesn't change. And then all these brighter colors are all supplemental plantings and those have all been, these are all trees. You know, they're all all screening trees, so. I think it's the, I think you were dead on with your scheduling comments and that that needs to be part of an early phase to get those plantings in. Particularly, you know, along the borders, north and south, and I think that's what I've tried to include in our phasing plan.
And so I I think what you're asking for is can we get you an updated planting plan and list? To reflect this more significantly landscape project. Which can then be incorporated into the.
And how fast can you get it? Because I I would be great. I know that we we had a thirty thousand dollar budget for peer review. I wouldn't mind a peer review.
Right. I mean.
How fast do you think David could turn around a landscape plan for us?
I think that's what I'm asking, just listening to the conversation, talking about lake. Talking about the screening for.
The neighbors.
Can you focus a little bit on?
Yeah, I mean.
Men and the neighbors.
So as Jim pointed out, there's very substantial existing vegetation there. Which isn't to say we're not, we'll commit to submit the landscaping plan. But, I mean, the the fact is that what's existing there and isn't going to be touched. Is mature, existing vegetative screening and we're going to be enhancing that. We submitted with our original proposal, we submitted a lighting plan which showed what a half candle.
Point one foot candles over the line.
So looking at at structures outside of your of your property, it seems that down here, which I assume is so.
Yes.
You know, that this is the area which has the thinnest.
Right, we agree with you. That's why we took out a building there, remember? We had it, right, so we.
So, you know, it could just be then focusing on the southern portion of the property. And I don't know what's down here, you know, I'm not as familiar with the the parcels outside of, you know.
There's ability to screen this edge and this edge. We, it's on our property. We own some land, a little bit more land that way, off the sheet.
So speaking of, speaking of. Of phasing. My sense is that, you know, you had talked about phase one being the mansion barn and I've added. Three phases before phase one, which would be a phase zero, which is, I think that it's my understanding that 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 the negotiation, the conservation restriction. Gets done before anything gets started. Phase zero zero is is kind of kind of figuring out what screening in those areas and making sure that's in place so that there's a minimum. Um, phase zero, zero is, uh, is kind of, kind of figuring out what screening in those areas and making sure that's in place so that there's a minimum disruption. Uh, and maximum peace of mind for neighbors, you know, in any construction process in this. And, and the, the third question I get, which isn't really phasing, but it'd be interesting, not interesting, I think it's, it's, it'd be in, I'd be curious to get a sense of where the staging for construction is going to. Not, I don't know if I'm staging in terms of like stages, but you know, where physically the construction kind of, you know, main areas are going to be and end, end the thought being that the more they are away from the edges of the property, the less disruptive they are to everyone else. Okay.
So again, I, I guess a couple of points. A typical condition would be that we have to provide, um, a construction management plan before we get started. We sit down, we meet with building, you know, D K D, whatever town officials we're told should be part of that, would be part of that. If the chief, police chief says we need a detail when we're bringing in certain shipments, we hire detail. And that's how that usually goes. In terms of staging, so the, the first phase is going to be restoring the mansion. So everything is going to be near the mansion, which you couldn't get further from the side property lines than that. Once the mansion's done and occupied, the next, um, portions of the project to be built, uh, likely would be the, um, areas on either side. And what you have to remember is that we're gonna, so the whole idea here is to start generating revenue from the property to help capitalize completion of the, or, you know, further. If we have guests in the hotel and we're out there making a ton of noise and dust, it's the people on site, right next to where we're building, who are going to be impacted more than anyone else. And it's not in our interest.
Right.
So we're not going to do that. We're going to be as careful as we possibly can be and insist that contractors are using low impact or, uh, methods are being sensitive. Yes to the neighbors, absolutely. Yes to the town and to the people who are sleeping next to, you know, feet away from where we're building. So I say that only to try to put it in context that there's no one that's going to have a greater incentive to keep construction impacts down than the applicant, because otherwise there's no business. The business is gone. That being said, absolutely, we, you know, we can put a condition in that staging materials will be, um, stored as far as possible from, um, property lines. We'll have to do erosion and sedimentation control if we have any earth material.
I'm not that concerned about, I mean, yeah, I, I want to bring it up, but I'll just.
Yeah.
Yeah, just got it. Um, I think that that's, um, I think that, that, that's, that's what I had for now. I don't know. The applicant has asked for a chance to recess. Do you want to take public comments before they do that? Or do you want to let them?
I have a few questions.
Oh, sorry.
And could I just go back? There was one point you brought up that, um, I haven't addressed yet and I, I want to, because it's an important one. And it's one that one of the, uh, Butters attorneys has raised as well. And it is one that I have discussed with town council today and provided some, uh, legal citations for, which is this notion that, um, the final stormwater management plan has to be, uh, prepared and approved as part of this special permit process. Uh, and what the, uh, Butters Council cited to is is a case, there are a couple of cases that stand for this, uh, concept that is usually called the anti-delegation doctrine. And what that means is that in granting an approval, a special permit approval, a subdivision approval, a board cannot basically kick the can down the road on a matter of substance and approve a permit subject to some future approval, uh, of a matter of substance. Um, and, uh, the, uh, Butters Council sets to a case called Tebow. There was a case before that. Um, and every case in which this argument is made notes that the concept is, is frequently cited, but almost always distinguished. And what that means is the anti-delegation doctrine almost never applies. And it never applies if there is a separate permitting process that is based upon clear and objective standards. Such as you have a separate stormwater management permitting process through a section of your bylaws that have very clear objective criteria as to whether or not you're complying with the Mass Stormwater Handbook or you're not. And in fact, the appeals court has specifically cited stormwater management as the exact type of approval that isn't subject to this anti-delegation doctrine and has distinguished, um, Tebow and Well from a case where, uh, uh, an approval says, look, you're going to have to satisfy stormwater requirements. And, um, I'll just quickly, uh, read an excerpt from a land court case. This is called Vizina versus Marshfield Planning Board. This brings us to the second part of Vizina's fourth argument, which relies on Weld versus Board of Appeals of Gloucester and Tebow versus Board of Appeals of Shrewsbury. For the proposition that the decision must be annulled because it wrongfully defers for later action, a decision on a matter of substance, i.e. the final stormwater. Sound familiar? The appeals court goes on to cite, um, a case called Miles, in which the appeals court specifically said that stormwater plans that are subject to specific objective criteria are not subject to the anti-delegation doctrine and that there, if, um, the appeals court said, that is a mischaracterization. In each instance, the developer is required to measure up to a recognizable and reasonably definite standard, which the planning board has adopted. There has been no postponement of the adoption of the standard or criterion. In other words, by saying in a condition, the applicant is going to have to get a stormwater management permit under our bylaw and meet those clear and objective criteria under our bylaw. The appeals court and the land court have repeatedly said that is not improper delegate. And it makes total sense because let's say, you know, the final buildings, uh, in the back are built in ten years. Best management practices for stormwater control may well have changed since then. There may be a new version of the storm scepter. There may be other, uh, methods for stormwater control. Do you really want the best management practices in place that are ten years out of date? To govern what happens then? And that's why our suggestion is, look, for each phase of construction, we're going to have to go and get a stormwater management permit under your bylaw. And that's entirely appropriate. And there's nothing in the by, in the zoning bylaw. And there's no paysaw that supports the notion that it's improper for you to say, yeah, it makes no sense to fully develop the stormwater management plan now.
And Chris's handle.
Um, Attorney Heap.
Thank you, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. I just wanted to jump in and, and offer my own set of comments and response on this issue. And I think it's important to note that there is some daylight, uh, between my, my sort of sense of this question and, and the one just shared by the applicant. So a couple of points to share, uh, from, from me. Point one, it is not at all unreasonable or outlandish to expect a special permit applicant to have a fully designed stormwater system when they present the application to you, the special permit granting authority. Uh, that is not an unreasonable or outlandish expectation to have in any kind of special permit application. Can the board offer some flexibility and address this in the form of a condition? Perhaps, but the board, I just want to out, I just want to be emphasized, the board is not obliged or legally required to, um, engage with stormwater in that, in, in the fashion that the applicant is asking you to. You, you, we can, we can talk about that, but that's not, you, you're not really obligated to, to. Point two. Uh, it is correct that there is a general rule in the case law that a special permit granting authority ought not defer until a later date, really after the issuance of the special permit, a decision of substance, uh, on an important matter that's included in the condition. Sorry, included in your special permit criteria. Stormwater is an issue addressed in the Cottage Era Estate section of the bylaws. Um, so there is some question about whether deferring it. Final review and analysis of the stormwater system to a later date would run afoul of that anti-delegation or anti-deferral rule, uh, that Jonathan referred you to. Uh, point three, he did, Jonathan did share with me and I, and I, and I appreciate this, um, some case law that, that seems to support the idea that stormwater conditioning could be an exception to the general rule that we're all talking about now. Um, it, it's a land court case. It does deal with stormwater, uh, conditioning. Um, and I, I guess I, I, the case is helpful. Uh, it is a trial court case. And I might want to devote a little bit more time myself to sort of thinking about how it figures into the greater scheme of, uh, the case law more broadly. Uh, but I guess I will acknowledge that Jonathan has shared a case that, uh, he believes is directly on point that covers this situation. But I, I, I guess the overarching point here I want to make is, is that this is a request being made by the applicant. It, it, it may be regarded as reasonable in the circumstances for a project of this type. But just backing up a step, uh, I would leave the board with the, with, with the, with the point that a fully designed stormwater system at the special permit level of permitting is not, uh, is not, you know, crazy or unusual. And, and we, we, the board may want to push for it more here or talk about using the condition for a later date. But again, it, it is not, it, to the extent the board is interested in seeing more or hearing more about the storm, development of their stormwater system, that is well within its authority, uh, as, as it reviews this permit application. Thank you.
Chris, Attorney Heap, can I ask for clarification on something?
Sure.
So con- conservation is the, um, permitting body of stormwater. So how does that factor into this question?
That is a great question. And I think, I'd say in addition to that, I will, you know, happily acknowledge that we do have a separate stormwater bylaw as, and separate stormwater permitting.
Right.
Process in addition to, um, you know, what I'll say is that I think you have to, we don't want to make the applicant do the same work two or three times in front of two or three different bodies in town. However, the bylaw, the special permit, the Cottage Era Estate special permit section of the bylaw does include a criteria that, you know, tasks this board with looking at stormwater. So that's a bit of a conundrum, I will, I will, I will acknowledge, but stormwater is among the things that the zoning bylaw itself does, does, uh, suggest we ought to be looking at in connection with this particular permit.
Okay.
Uh, but what, how long has the conservation been in charge of the stormwater permitting?
Since they moved to the planning board three or four years ago. It was, I think I was, I was in office when they moved over.
It's about four years.
So it was done after the bylaw, the great state bylaw was made. So.
Mid.
That's, so it's kind of like.
Yeah.
You know.
I know what happened.
It was put in the bylaw because the planning board had it and now the conservation has it. It kind of changes.
No, so what happens if we were to approve a stormwater plan, the conservation would deny it?
Yeah.
I mean, that goes to the common. Uh, I mean, I, I don't know, Chris, if you have any thoughts on, on, you know, the lack of duplicative effort, you know? Where should this, where should this sit? Should it sit with this board or with conservation? Or does he have to, does the applicant have to go through the process twice?
The, the applicant needs all of the permits that are required under all of our various bylaws. I will, you know, to some extent, I will defer to the board on how this is best lined up among all of the various boards in town, applying all of their, you know, all of the bylaws within their jurisdiction. Uh, again, I'll concede that we don't want to make the applicant do this work twice. The question, I, I think the question for the, the important question for the board is, well, uh, you know, to, to your point, Patrick, duplication of, we don't want to duplicate efforts, but we also don't want to um, approve this permit and have another board. Uh.
Muck it up.
Exactly, exactly. I, I impose changes on the project that are not contemplated by us now. Uh, because that'll send the applicant back to you guys. It's, you know.
Well, so my question would be, so the do it is in phases. So each phase, I have to go to the conservation to get a stormwater permit, correct?
Yes.
So it's going to be done in phases. And it's up to the conservation to say, you know, to put them up to what they have to do. Um, and if they don't agree on it, then the project stops and it goes to legal, whatever. So it's not. Is that right? If we approve the, the permitting and they put their plans in, they go to the first phase of stormwater, conservation agrees to what they're doing, second phase have an issue with, the project stops until that's corrected. Is that?
I'd think of it somewhat, I'd think of it somewhat differently. I, I, I think, I think of it, if you if you approve this permit, you are approving, uh, under the zoning bylaw, all of the housing and all of the various structures and uses that are proposed to go on this property. If they, if they need to go get stormwater permits sequentially in phases, you have already approved all of the structures and all of the housing and all of the uses. And I would think that an engine, well, and this is this is, sort of goes to the point, but I would think an engineer could, um, with those phase stormwater permits, you know, come up with something that's going to handle the stormwater for each, each respective phase. The question is, 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 do we need to see that now in order to give that first approval under the zoning for all of what's being asked for by the applicant?
Okay.
Could I make a couple of quick points?
Yes, please.
Um, so first of all, uh, the Cottage Era Estates portion of the bylaw actually doesn't say anything about stormwater. Um, your general special permit requirements do. And obviously we still need us, you know, we still have to satisfy those requirements, but I think it's in, an important point to make because the Cottage Era Estates specific findings uh, and standards say nothing about stormwater. Why is that? Why is that? What we're proposing is essentially a master plan for redevelopment of this property. And in fact, there's case law that says in the master, i- in the context of a master plan type special permit, again, it doesn't make sense and it's not required to have the stormwater worked out at the master plan special permit stage. That's what we're proposing here. I want to be really clear about something else. Mr. Heap said that the board's not obligated to do this. I think I've been very clear in repeatedly saying my arguments on all of these points is never that the board is obligated to do any of these things, but that you have the authority to. So I don't, I don't think that's a relevant point. I've never suggested you're required to do this. In terms of what's reasonable to expect, we didn't just make this decision unilaterally. We had numerous communications with town officials upfront saying, this is our intent. Is that okay with you? And the response was, yeah, that makes sense. So, you know, to suggest that we're somehow making this decision on our own. We suggested it. We felt like we, you know, people understood why that made sense. And that's how we've proceeded. The permitting processes in Vazina, which yes, was a trial court case, but as I said, it relied on an appeals court decision, which is precedential and is binding, that said the exact same thing about the exact same subject, which is the Miles case. So it, it is binding in what both of those cases were in the context of subdivision approvals. And yes, the subdivision rules and regulations in both of those towns also had stormwater management, more so. Stormwater management is more a part of subdivision control than it is a part generally of use special permit applications. And so, you know, even if the cottage area states portion of the bylaws did mention stormwater, which it doesn't, so did the subdivision rules and regulations at issue in Miles and Vazina and the other cases in which the court said very clearly, the board was not required to have a final stormwater management plan at the time of approval. Again, we're not saying you have to approve it like this. We're asking you to, and we've been very clear about that. And I think it makes a lot of sense for the reasons I've articulated earlier, which is that things may change. We may come back to request change in building placement or location. You know, there may be field changes that you may find ledge. There may be advances in stormwater management techniques as the phases are proposed. And at each phase, we have to go to the conservation commission and meet clear and objective standards. So I'm very certain that it would be appropriate and permissible for the board to approve our use master plan special permit application with a condition that prior to construction of any phase, we have to make sure that we satisfy the permitting requirements for stormwater.
And then I just had a couple, one more question and then two comments. So my question is on page three and it's 2.0 and it could be how I'm reading it, but I just wanted clarification. So the sentence I'm confused is in the middle of the paragraph. The hotel residences are considered transient or permanent, consistent with the definition in the bylaw. I've got confused by the or.
That's the language straight out of your Bible.
Okay.
So you'll recall at the very first public hearing, Mr. White brought up the question of use.
Okay.
And we had a discussion about the fact that your, the bylaws definition of hotel includes transient or permanent residences. And I made the point that many high-end resorts, Four Seasons, Ritz, they have these hotel re- it's a big thing now.
Right.
Why isn't it multifamily? It's not multifamily because it's part of a resort community.
Okay.
You can get a room service. It's professionally managed. You can put it in the pool to be rented by the units that are owned by the hotel itself. You can take advantage of all the amenities of the resort just as if you're living at the Meridian or the Four Seasons or any of those. So that or is straight out of your Bible.
Okay, thank you. And then it was about the conservation restriction. I know that I, I'm on the Stockbridge Land Trust and we, the applications and the permitting has changed greatly this year. And so we had a really hard time finishing one. So I, I can kind of appreciate the used easement. The other was, I know our, one of our neighbors, I'd have brought this up before, Kripalu also has connected walkways that are glass and they're very lovely. And it is a part of the building. So they are in Stockbridge. We do have them. But I don't know if they had to get a permit or not. That was it. That's all I had because all my questions were answered. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any, do you have a question?
Well, I have a question for you. Your comments on the easement, are you saying you would prefer conservation easement to a restriction?
No, I just wanted to point out that the, the way to do the application has changed. So it's just something we want to weigh out.
Because in easement, obviously the two parties in easement would be a town, the town and the applicant. And through a procedure, the town, the town, the applicant could agree to remove an easement at any time in the future if they followed the procedure. Whereas a conservation restriction takes an act of the legislature and is much
No, I agree. Okay. I agree.
So that's, I mean, that's
Just wanted just to point out the change. Not a preference. All right, Chucky.
I'm good. All my questions have been answered.
Hi.
Did he want to recess about cockroaches or something? Are you all set or?
Or do you want to carry on?
Well, I think at some point before we get to, you know, the board discussions, it would be helpful to add a recess, whether it's now or we hear public comment I'm agnostic on, but I, I, if I, I could, before we recess, I'd like to just confirm sort of the list of issues that I'm going to be conferring with my client about. Just so I make sure that we cover all the bases before we come back and, and have those more substantive discussions. So I'll defer to the board on whether we recess now or after public.
I think we should run through the wonder lists as far as I
It was your
Let's hear what he thinks there is.
So I think the issues I've heard are the amount of the payments in lieu of the workforce housing being provided on site. The extent of the land and back being restricted to in perpetuity and the form of the restriction. Don't know. And, and I think we resolve the issue of the preservation of the mansion.
I think so, but you know, I, I do think that, you know, defining what the baseline is that, you know, yeah.
So those are the issues that I have in my mind. Am I missing anything?
No.
Okay. So yeah, if the board wants to hear a public comment first to see if that spurs anything else that I should be talking to my client about.
Yeah. What do we do? Comments? And again, what's two minutes per person or per group and for no more than an hour. And then we will break.
I feel like if we got these answers, the comments would be more relevant. I mean, I, I think I'd prefer to take a recess now. I need a recess.
You do too. Okay. I'm overridden. Do I have to do a turn?
Recession, how long?
Okay. Um, you have 10 minutes. No more than 10 minutes and everyone's to be settled. So we're, our recess is over and we're starting. So the two minutes public comment will start. It is per person, however you define yourself.
We're not getting, you don't want to get feedback on them?
To have their answers for it.
I know it's just going over something because I had lots of questions. So, and we will go no longer than one hour because we're already at eight, almost eight 30. The applicant will give some information and then we will start public comment. And I just wanted, I forgot in the beginning that Dr. Kenny emailed a letter in. It will be entered into the record as is. So that's it. Attorney Silverstein, are you ready?
I am. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss some of these issues with my client. Some of these are, have been, you know, difficult issues from his standpoint. He really does feel like a long way and made a lot of concessions throughout this process and really tried to adjust the project based upon feedback that we had before this hearing started and since commencement of the hearing. That being said, our proposal would be this. This area would be a conservation restriction. If we can get an entity to hold the restriction. I don't want to have a situation, I don't anticipate it, but where we can't find a qualified entity to hold the restriction and then that puts the entire project in jeopardy. That's actually a case I'm litigating right now with Mr. Creeker's office in another community where efforts were made to get a holder of the conservation restriction. It didn't happen and then
And you make the burden of that.
Absolutely. We'll make all good faith.
No, I'm saying, can that be the town's responsibility or fine?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
And failing that, it would be a conservation easement.
Right.
The area in the middle, we would propose a conservation easement that prohibits dwelling units and requires modification of the special permit for any use in connection with the resort, the hotel resort. Trying to list all of the very, the specific types of things that we might want, want to ask for permission someday to do back here is, is just too difficult and, and ties our hands too much. And we feel that the town's very adequately protected by the fact that we still need discretionary approval from the board in order to do anything back there, whether it's glamping or, you know, whatever it is. And you can say no. And it might be, you know, I mean, glamping can be very low impact. And I'm not trying to litigate that issue because we're not proposing it. I was just trying to think of examples of things that we might someday ask, but that, that would be our proposal.
And what would that easement entail?
It would be essentially a restriction that prohibits any residential units from being constructed in this area and require special permit approval from the board for any other use in connection with the hotel resort other than the agricultural.
So it would be an agricultural easement or it would be an easement?
I think it, it's a little bit of a hybrid and I think Town Council and I could put our heads together and
Is there, the advice I got today was that to, to remove the easement, we would need not only a vote of this board, but a vote of the town meeting.
Absolutely.
So that's a pretty high standard.
Right. So we wouldn't, that's why in the easement, it would provide for us as, we wouldn't be removing the easement because the easement would allow for us to come back to the board for modification of the special permit for uses in connection with the hotel resort other than residential units, which would be outright prohibited.
We haven't been able to talk about that. Is that all right? I mean, I, I feel like this is one we should get a little advice from Christopher on.
Can I ask?
Yeah. Chris, what are some of the potential users outside of, you know, residential units that, that, that would be allowed under this proposal?
I think that's entirely dependent on what, how, how we draft, how the easement is drafted. I think there's no right answer to that in the abstract. That depends on the drafting of the easement document itself. So I would, I would want to be taking notes, which I've been doing, but I, you know, I, I would want to, you, you know, to make sure that we all understood what the board thinks should and shouldn't be allowed in, in, in general terms and that the easement ultimately describes that accurately. But again, it's not, it doesn't need to be one particular thing. It could, it, that's a drafting exercise that we would need to engage in in order to adequately capture the intent of the board.
Okay. So when would we have that conversation then? Now? Or do you feel like you have enough notes? Because you know, my position, I'd rather just see an agricultural, a conservation restriction.
I don't feel prepared to, I wouldn't want to draft that condition right now.
In real time. Okay.
No, no, I would not.
I mean, my suggestion would be that the condition would describe the what the, the substance of that document in general terms and include language that says in a form approved by Town Council, which is something that's very frequently included in such conditions. And then Town Council and I would work it out and we couldn't do anything until we reached a agreement.
All right. Then my only comment on that is rather than having the one thing that is prohibited, I would like all items that are allowed to be enumerated. So you know what? You're going to have, you're going to have time now. We're not doing it in real time. You got lots of time to think through what you might want to do up there. I want to see an enumerated list of what you're thinking about. And you made a comment earlier, Jonathan, that, you know, this is all about the profitability or whatever in terms of the construction. I know that was in the context of the staging of the construction. And I would just point out that from my perspective, this is all about preservation. This is about preservation of the land and preservation of the mansion. So I, I don't need to be too much of a hard ass, but you know, this is, you're going to have to think it through between you and Chris because we're going to want to, we're going to want to understand exactly what, at least I'm going to want to understand exactly what we're getting into in the absence of an agricultural restriction.
Yeah. I mean, I, I guess again, my point is it's difficult to think, I mean, whoever would have talked about pickleball 20 years ago?
Racket sports. Come on. You know, I know, I know, but the, the reality is that I don't want to see a lot of paving up there. This is tremendous wildlife.
Talking about paving. We're, we're talking about having flexibility to ask for permission to do something that we don't, we, we can't think of all the examples. And respectfully, where right now that, right from a regulatory standpoint, we'd have to go through a process, but this land isn't protected. It's, there's nothing to set. We could go in there and forest it. We, there's so many things we could do. And we're committing to a permanent restriction on two thirds of this property and a very substantial restriction on, you know, half, more than half of what's left. and a very substantial restriction on, you know, half, more than half of what's left.
Another.
This wasn't our original concept, we did this because it's what was asked of us. So, you know, there have already been a lot of concessions and a lot of trade offs and we're just asking for some consideration of flexibility because we want this to be successful and we hope you do too. And we don't know what might someday make sense to ask permission for.
A alternative compromise would be to expand somewhat the dark green and then leave with more flexibility, the whatever color this is. So you know what, I gave you, give you two options, you can enumerate or you can, or you can expand. I want to protect as much of the land as possible. That is, I think, it's a preservation by law. You don't have to answer now, you're gonna have a chat conversation with Chris.
As to the payment, I think we, we really tried to put a, a good amount of money on the table. We, we didn't think we were stingy about it, $20,000 per unit seemed really substantial. If we can get to agreement on all the, these other things. And I should say that with all of this, we don't want this to be a death by a thousand cuts, we're gonna have to get other approvals. If, you know, if we're unable because of appeals or other permitting requirements to build what, all, all of these concessions have to be based on, you know, what the project is as currently proposed. With the understanding that if, for instance, we're unable to build some number of the homes uh because of, you know, not being able to get an order of conditions to do work in the buffer zone. Yep, where we can't have this deal now that we're asked for another conservation restriction for another portion of the property, so. That being said, uh, we'll come up to $25,000 per unit for a single family unit upon issuance of occupancy. And then I, I think those were the two major restrictions I think to discuss.
And, and I just want to point out that, that um the applicant is not subject to the residential inclusionary bylaw. And so $25,000 I think is, is a, you know, I, I gave you a little bit of a hard time earlier on that, but we both recognized that you were under no obligation to do that, so thank you.
All right, so it is eight thirty seven. We will start at the front. Dr. Hyman, do you want your two minutes?
I, I just.
Okay.
I prefer actually Mr. Kreider to go first since he has not spoken.
Okay. And introduce yourself, please.
Of course. Good evening, I'm Adam Chairman of the Board, Public, my name is Art Krieger, Senior Counsel of Anderson &amp; Krieger. Uh, and counsel this matter to James and Jackie Mann, Philip on Meadow Road. As you know from my letters, I assume by the way that my letters will be entered into the record as Mr. Kenny's, Dr. Kenny's part. Uh, I'm gonna start and I, you know, I look personally, so I will. I'm gonna start with the non-delegation argument. It's not just that there's no final stormwater plan. Uh, Beal's associates had 50 separate stormwater comments, over about 14 pages. You know almost nothing about stormwater, things that were mentioned in the narrative were not shown on the plan. Some things were mentioned at all, they said we complied and now it turns out they think they can comply. It's far more than the absence of plans, of a final plan, and it's also far more than stormwater ship. Uh, you don't know about water supply, Beal said they don't have an easement that it looks like they need. We didn't hear anything about that in their response or tonight. Uh, you don't know about preservation, actually, you don't know what in the mansion can be preferred, can be preserved. Uh, they, they, because they don't, they don't know yet about the floor and the sub, the basement areas. Um, I think there's a good chance you wind up with a bunch of moldings and fireplace mantles in the Stockbridge Historical Society. It, it, you have no assurance at all that, that even what they say can be preserved can be. And they're banking their entire preservation argument on a small piece of the building. That's, that's the problem with relying on facade. Point number two. You can connect these buildings with connectors, you can, you can gussy them up however you want. But I'm gonna disagree with Chris Heap on one point. That might work for the detached argument under the 6.6.3D. It has no bearing on 6.1.2, the extension of a non-conforming structure, because that uh because that refers to, sorry, 6.6.3 refers to attached or, uh, sorry, additions or new construction. So whether they're attached or not, it doesn't matter.
Gentle time?
Excuse me?
Time.
Time, all right, can I just note for the record that uh I think particularly where it's my non-delegation argument is being raised, and I'm forced to respond to that within the two minutes, that this is not fair, a fair restriction, I will obviously comply with it.
I have a question. Would we allow other, other folks who have the right to speak to delegate their time to Mr. Attorney Krieger? I, I feel like we're not, this is, you know, we had the most detailed letter of any that we're submitted and I guess it's up to you, I defer to you, but.
Um, I spoke to Donna today about it and I felt, she felt that we had to be fair and that if I give someone 10 minutes, I have to give everyone 10 minutes. But if you can, and so we are, it's quarter of nine and um you guys, how does the board feel?
Letters in and everything already, so we got the information. I'll save the two minutes.
The Halloween I are giving that time.
We've all been giving our time. Your lawyers, their lawyers can stand here for an hour and a half.
We're giving our time.
They're the applicant.
Come on.
The applicant.
Applicant, they have to.
They have to. They're giving us information.
Well, we're giving, how do you know that we're not going to give you an?
May I, may I take one minute as a way to cut through this?
It's a sham.
I'm sorry you feel that way.
I do, so sorry that I have to feel this way. You should feel that way too.
Madam Chair, I don't want to get caught up in any of that, but if I could have one more minute.
Christopher, are you on the line?
I am.
Could you help arbitrate or mediate this, please?
It is certainly reasonable to impose a time limit on public speakers during the public comment period. Uh, it's, you know, it, it's entirely up to the board in terms of whether or not you want to allow additional time for any particular speaker.
All right, you may have one more minute, sir.
Thank you. On the argument, or on the issue about whether new buildings or additions, whether they're attached or not, can exceed the square footage of the mansion, the gross floor area. The applicant didn't respond that these are attached, as I just pointed out, that's irrelevant because it applies to additions or new construction. What the applicant said was, this is in the R2 district. I'm just gonna rely on my letter there because that makes, makes a hash of the, of the bylaw. That says that you can dwarf the mansion. You, you could, wherever that picture is, you can dwarf it with buildings if you're far from the road and out of public view. Excuse me, you, you can't dwarf it there, that's the R4 district, farther from the road. You can dwarf the mansion if it's up by the road where everybody can see it. Which is exactly contrary to the intent of the bylaw, that the public view of the mansion be preserved. This mansion is surrounded by five, six, 800 feet looking from the road of the width of the project. Uh, and to say that you can exceed the square footage in that area of the mansion is, is a nonsensical reading of the bylaw, which you did not hear from town council tonight, you heard it only from the applicant.
Gentle time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Attorney?
Peter Piszewski, representing the Hymans. It is certainly reasonable to put time limitations on speakers. I have been doing this for close to 50 years and I have never encountered a two-minute limitation. That's an outrage, it shows your contempt for the abutters and your bias towards the developer who can speak forever. I'll just go directly to one point that Mr. Silverstein made. He made all sorts of fanciful discrimination that in order to not have the hotel units be multi-family buildings. However, you are bound by the definitions in your bylaw. Your bylaw says one or more rooms constituting a separate independent housekeeping establishment with cooking, living, sanitary and sleeping facilities to the use of one family is a dwelling. And your definition of multifamily dwelling is a residential building designed for or occupied by three or more families with not more than one family in each unit. Under your definitions, the hotel units are unquestionably a multifamily building and it makes no difference if they can play paddleboard or they can order meals in. By your bylaw, they are incontrovertibly multifamily buildings and they are not permitted. I would also raise one thing prospectively and, and that is, I would remind the board that you cannot accept any submissions after you close the hearing. And if you're planning on closing the hearing tonight, then that means Mr. Silverstein or the developer cannot give you any additional information after this. The cases weakly against the planning board of Hingham, which, in which I prevailed in the Appeals Court in 1979 and in which the Appeals Court overturned the grant of a subdivision plan because a submission was made after the closing of the hearing.
Thank you. Stuart?
I'd like to say that the hearings have been, I think, an outrage. You've given enormous amount of time to the applicant and I understand they're the applicant. But we have abutters who are interested parties. They're not just the ordinary citizens who would otherwise have a right to speak for two minutes. We're talking about a, a fundamental right that affects them by the statutes that you are supposed to be judging. And by that, by the way, it seems to me there are certain things that are required findings under the bylaws. It doesn't say that these are just, well, maybe you could do it, maybe you can't. They're required, including the 200 feet, it talks about uh will not be detrimental to adjacent uses or to the establishment or future character of the neighborhood. I haven't heard one word about the neighborhood, about people being affected by this. We heard about a traffic study. Traffic study in the winter is as useful as a traffic study in, I don't know where, but it's not any sensible one. You come around when ta- tango weather is around and it's a completely, completely different world. And 183 is a place where it's dangerous to walk generally. And when you have a potential for hundreds of cars in addition to what we ordinarily have, you're creating a major, major danger. And I really believe that we are at a crossroads in the town right now. If we allow a development like this, Stockbridge is not ever going to be the same. So you are responsible, I think, for the future of Stockbridge, for where we're going to be headed. And I think you'll bear responsibility if you approve this as it is with this enormous amount of congestion here. I mean, it's fine to talk about all of this, but this is the problem, I can't really focus on that at all.
Thank you. Lisa?
Lisa Sauer. No, we've been talking about all this development and I think we need to get back to the basics of the cottage era bylaw. Which is purpose, section 6.6.0 is to authorize the select board to provide a permit under, for rehabilitations of certain cottage era estates while encouraging the preservation, restoration or improvement of the original features and characteristics of the principal building. I want to point out that um the appeals people suggested that they need elevations. This is a rendering, this is not an elevation. The bylaw requests for elevation shall require facade elevation drawing for every facade elevation that is to be changed or redesigned showing such proposed changes or new design. Each change own or new element and all materials shall be clearly identified on the elevation. This is a rendering, so I ask the board to ask for elevations of all four facades before any work is undertaken on that property. Secondly, Jamie mentioned about the applicability of the hotel residence and that the uh current proposal suggests a transient or permanent consistent. I want to read the bylaw, the cottage era bylaw, estate 6.6.2. The bylaw states a resort shall be defined as a use that includes a building or group of buildings with sleeping rooms for 20 or more transient guests. This does not say permanent anywhere. Finally, I want to ask the board if you really think that this entire project is in keeping in with intent of the cottage era estate bylaw. If it is necessary or appropriate for the town of Stockbridge future and if it is respectful of the tax paying abutters who will be most of that.
Gentle time, thank you. Danny?
Thank you. Well, you know, my interest is water and um I think that um we're dealing with something up here which is a, a geologic formation. And water moves over and through it in a way that is unique in Berkshire County and in Massachusetts. The uh, I, I spent some time on the phone today with the head of the Water Section of DEP and tried to explain to him what karst formation was and how tubular uh flow channels can develop which can transport groundwater great distances. I've been following this because I went back and I looked at the original warrant item for the, when the cottage era estate bylaw was rewritten, which was February of 2013, a special town meeting. And the first thing that I noticed was the way in which the removal of the groundwater recharge area conservancy district was entwined with the cottage era estate bylaw. And that led me to think, aha, there's something going on here and we better try to understand why the groundwater recharge area protection is being removed, particularly from a property
Gentle time.
which is close to our town water supply. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol?
I, I never speak at these things, but I was asked to tell a story which I found it to tell. And whether that's for something or against something, I don't know, but I want you all to know this story. For 30 years, Mary Flynn was my best friend and I can't ever say that without getting choked up. And we met every day and we talked about lots of things and mostly about the political things she was doing because they were more interesting. And when she was dying, I had her health proxy and her financial proxy and all the proxies. And she couldn't open her hands from this. And one night when I was cooking her and I fed her, she took her hand like this and she knocked the back of my hand. And she said, Carol, we missed one. And I said, "What do you mean?" She said, "Don't tell anyone," but I mostly got my way. But there's one I couldn't get. I couldn't get the conservation restriction of Yoken Ridge and the land behind on the Desisto property. And tonight I heard that we got it. So, Mary? Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Now, do you want to speak?
Good evening. Thank you. My name's Jim Mann. My wife and I, Jackie, live on Middle Road. We, in fact, abut the Desisto. We've had that property for about fifty years, first when my in-laws built a frame on that site. It struck me, if you don't mind my saying, that after all the legal discussions going on, pretty much everything is your discretion, whether the how, whether the height issue is violated is your discretion, whether the footage is your discretion, whether there's stormwater has to be decided now. There is almost a few things that seem to be unclear in the law. So I'm trying to figure out if this is almost your discretion, what it is that you find, anybody finds so compulsive about doing this? There is somewhere presumably some believed economic benefit that's going to come to the town? If it is, no one's ever provided it. If anything, people have spoken about the added costs for water and sewer, police and fire. What the tax revenue is hardly known as well, what kind of business. What we do know is eight hundred and fifty people occupying a place in the backyards of all the people who live here. If you live in this town, think about what it would be like for eight hundred and fifty people to show up in your backyard. It's an unfair and unkind thing. And I might also add, every time I read a paper here, there's talk about housing that's not affordable, or lists of about two thousand people who are seniors or disabled who don't have housing. Where is that kind of civic benefit or social purpose of our, of our city? This, this is not for anybody's benefit. I, I really, I would really plead with you to think about providing these folks with the permission to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne?
Wayne Slalik, Seven Hill Road. I don't have prepared notes. But I think there are so, so many things that the gentleman just really went back to that is positive. Says there's nothing positive. We've just preserved seventy-five percent of this huge tract of, of land. The project has been reduced. The project will provide revenue, much revenue, that we need in this town to keep going forward. I think it's a well-conceived plan. I think our board does have discretion on much of these things, many of these things. I'm glad they do, because if we're going to cut this off at the knees, we've talked about this forever. There's so many benefits to it. The, while I understand the abutters have concerns, I, I get it. I do. But with all that's been proposed to put the landscaping and do things in an attitude that comes from the applicant that wants to work with the town, not come in and have an argument. They've gone over backwards to try to do things that would accommodate the town and have made changes that have been requested. And at some point, it does have to be profitable. The cottage estate bylaw was created for this exact situation. And if we're not going to allow here, we're not going to allow it anywhere. It basically is the last one that can be done, and it's being well thought out and well discussed. And I think this is a, a great plan, and I think we should, I, I hope that the selectmen will approve it because it's, it's a well thought out, and I'm glad that you have that discretion.
Thank you. Ron? Lynn? Charlie? Do you want to speak? Josh?
Josh Heron, sixty-two hundred Laken Road. This VHB report said that the driveways are straight and level several hundred feet beyond the drys road. That's a matter of a few properties and seconds for cars to go by. If you live downhill below the driveways, the roadway actually picks up. So you have a reduced vision on these properties here. And if at some point somebody says, "We're going to guardrail this," then you box everybody in below the roadway. Now, this was an accident from the previous winner, right across from where the exit's supposed to be. They went off the road. That car would have been in the house if it didn't hit the telephone pole. So I don't see how this situation makes this better, and the safety of the residents is not being addressed. And as I showed you last time, Tanglewood traffic is not dispersed after the large concerts. This is what comes back through the nighttime at forty, fifty miles an hour through here. So this idea that people are pulling into a gate at a ninety-degree angle, to me, is a fantasy. You would kill people. And you have no thoughtful traffic plan here. This is, this is totally unrealistic. If once a town goes in the roadways, you're talking about major infrastructure projects, whether it's up here for turning lanes and sidewalks and the rest of it. And the study that they did with the three peak times of the day there, to me, it was like, it did not look like this was addressing Tanglewood traffic. If you're not addressing Tanglewood traffic on this roadway, you're in for a big mess. And that's, I, I really believe you should have an engineer from Beals discussing this with a planning board. And this is really a matter of life and death up there. This is no joke and little comments from the other side of town. This is very concerning to the abutters across from here that is not being addressed. This is not a realistic driveway plan unless somebody's going to show it. And I could go on, but, you know, I would have rather had more than two minutes, three minutes ago.
Gentletime. Thank you. So on Zoom, is there, can you show of hands?
Yes, I would like to speak.
Mary?
Hello. If, if you'd like, Jim, if you'd like to go first, that's fine.
Mary C.
Is it my turn?
Mary C.
Okay, I think that's me. Do you hear me okay? I, I'm not getting an affirmative. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I agree that the selectmen bear the responsibility to protect the town, and you do owe the abutters a visit. By the way, Mary Carecoley, sixty-four inner lake and across the street. There are many people who stand to make a lot of money on this, and not necessarily in the town, but individuals who have friends in high places. Your job, your job is to protect the town. As part of that, you owe all of us abutters a site visit. It is stunning that you have not made the effort to meet with us despite invitations to do so. You cannot make a decision this monumental without a site visit to the abutters. The safety of the community is at stake, and yet you are entertaining a massive project that will change Stockbridge in perpetuity with an entity that has no track record for running such a massive hospitality endeavor. Why are you even doing this? This is a hard business to manage. If the owner is over his head, which he will likely be, what happens? A continued push to monetize with more and more events, maybe something else, maybe flipping to another company, a hospitality company that has very deep international pockets and will ask for forgiveness, not permission. Good luck beating that. Your job is to protect the town and to be more considerate of the abutters. I hope that you're going to take advantage of this other invitation and seriously come have a site visit with us. I agree with all the other speakers, and I really expect that this project, at the end of the day, will cost the town money, not be a moneymaker. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom want to speak?
Yes, I would like to speak.
And your name?
Jim Youngerman.
You may speak.
Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. I'm an abutter on Old Tree Farm Road, and I'm going to speak very broadly about this issue. Please take a look at the four Rockwell reproductions on the wall behind you and observe their beauty. Norman Rockwell was an iconic Stockbridge resident, and part of his success was his adherence to three basic principles of art: balance, scale, and proportion. Our town is a natural work of art. What is being proposed is out of balance with the neighborhood and the town, out of proportion with the neighborhood and the town, and out of scale with the neighborhood and the town. It's the largest development in Stockbridge ever. This is a, a decision before, this is a big decision before the board. Based on the three principles, I implore the board to flatly oppose it, and I would like to yield the remainder of my one hundred and twenty seconds to the Hyman's attorney. Thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom? Seeing none. We will close the public.
No, I continue.
What?
I'll close it.
No, I said the public comment. All right, it's nine oh five. Attorney Silverstein, do you have any comments before we adjourn?
It's two minutes.
Two minutes.
And everybody else was.
Can I have order in the room, please?
Sure, I want to give you two minutes.
I, there, there's nothing in particular that was said during public comment that I don't feel I've addressed previously and happy to address any questions the board might have. One clarification I want to make is that I never anticipated and certainly never requested that the public hearing would be closed tonight, so I'm not sure where that comment came from. But I'm happy to respond to any specific comments that were made if the board has any questions about.
Chuck, do you have any questions?
No.
Patrick?
I understand.
I have no, no more questions right now.
Tonight?
I, I think that I have a question on process going forward.
Don't we need to continue and make a date certain?
Well, I, I think before we do that, we might talk about sort of, you know, what next steps are.
Well, they gotta
I have to.
Come up with those proposals.
Those four?
Give us on a certain date right away.
Don't we need a date?
Time and date, sir. Yeah.
And the eighth is our regular select board to do, select board things.
I think we should still meet the eighth. We can, we can have multiple items on the agenda.
Will you be ready by the eighth? It's next week.
Week from the end.
Fifteenth would be better for you.
Seventh day. It doesn't have to be a Thursday. We could do a Wednesday.
I do have a conflict on the eighth. So my suggestion would be, perhaps we could have a continuance to the seventh. I could only attend by, I could only attend by Zoom. Or actually with the sixth, or Tuesday the sixth.
Oh, we have a ZBA meeting. Does that matter? Michael?
No.
There's a ZBA meeting, that's right. Okay.
And if I could, I, I could only attend by Zoom, but I think, I mean, at this point, I think my understanding is I would prepare some proposed conditions, get them to Town Council for review, and then we could review them during that hearing, so I don't think it would be as planned intensive. So my attending by Zoom would, I don't think be an impediment to working through proposed conditions and hopefully.
Is he on?
Sixth year town meeting?
No.
No, it's Lennox.
May nineteenth.
Our town.
Baby town meeting.
It's the twelfth. Oh, I thought it was the twelve, fourteen.
I knew the sixth, that everyone wants.
Let's check with our attorneys, see if they're ready in time.
Actually, you have a planning board in Zartway. We have both rooms occupied.
So the seventh would be better for us. Can you be ready by the seventh? Seventh is a Wednesday? Yes.
So I have a, another Zoom hearing at seven, planning board hearing.
It's busy.
Yeah.
It's a follow-up. It's the following week. The fifteenth was scheduled, so I'll shift to fifteenth.
You said you had a town meeting on the twelfth?
No.
Nineteenth.
The nineteenth. We can do the twelfth or the thirteen.
The twelfth would be great, and I.
Okay. Six thirty?
Twelfth is a Monday?
Yeah.
Hold on.
Six thirty?
Madam Chair, this is Chris. I will not be able to attend on the twelfth. I can.
Will Donna?
I can, I can check. I can certainly check with her.
You want to let me here?
Can we call or text her?
Do you have a date during the day?
I'll mute myself for a moment. I can be back with it. I can be back in a moment.
Some people work late afternoon.
We need one attorney soon. We can't do it without attorney.
Did you just want to stick to the fifteenth?
Let's just stick to the fifteens. Everybody suffered.
How about the fifteen?
So the fifteen would be fine. I guess my thought was that if we ended up needing one more night, if we had an interim meeting, we could still have the fifteenth to fall back on.
What date do we have left?
About the thirteenth. Christopher, are you available the thirteenth?
Oh, you're just going to check on Madonna now?
No, I, I am available on the thirteenth. I can do that.
Are you available?
Yes.
Six thirty?
I remember just pointing out that there wouldn't, there wouldn't be any time, there would be no time to post for the fifteenth.
My suggestion would be to post the meeting, and you can always cancel it.
It's not the point. The point is the fifteenth meeting. There won't be forty-eight hours.
No, that's what I'm saying. If you post, you can go ahead and post the meeting for the fifteenth, forty-eight hours in advance, and if you don't need it, you can cancel it.
But can you continue without a date certain on the thirteenth or fifteenth?
You have to announce that night the date certain, saying you can schedule.
So we're going to schedule the thirteenth and the fifteenth for six thirty. Okay. And if we don't need one.
Check with Chris at this.
Chris, is that okay?
That is perfectly fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's going to be six thirty?
Six thirty, our usual time. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you for coming.